And the public hearing, we're gonna do the public hearing first, then we'll do our regular meeting. So this time, we're gonna start a public meeting on the improvement project of the alleyway behind West River. And.
Ooh, sorry.
No, you're fine. So at this time, we will take comments from the public, comment of the project, or protesting against it with your comments. If you raise your hand, I'll recognize you, then just say your name, and then we will go from there. Let's start with you, ma'am.
I'm Cheryl Rush. I'm the owner of 102 First Street Southwest on the block of the native property. This is a protest by a group of us against the resolution of necessity 2022-01. We, the residents of First Street Southwest Block Eight, a residential street, protest the resolution of necessity, including us in the improvement district. The majority of the property in the district is commercial property, used to provide services to the city of Hazen. West River Telecommunication and the United States Postal Service are the commercial businesses that use and have created the conditions in the alley. First Street Southwest Block Eight is a separate property. We are residential, not commercial. Three people own the property on First Street Southwest Block Eight, from First Avenue to Second Avenue, that has been designated in the district. None of our three properties are connected to the alley, nor do we directly have direct alley access from our homes. None of us use the alley. Our garbage collection is in front of our homes. In Section Two of the resolution, the cost of improvement, special assessment to be levied upon property within the district in amounts proportionate and not to exceed the benefits to be derived by them respectively from the improvement. The residents of First Street Southwest Block Eight will receive no benefit from the Alley Project 2022-1. Restate again, the commercial properties, WRT, and the US Post Office are the beneficiaries of the project. The three owners of the separate residential property area would like to include the fact that we are all over sixty-five years of old age and on fixed incomes. We are a retired woman that served in the military, a disabled veteran, and a disabled woman with her disabled daughter living with her. There are, these are the citizens that the city commission has decided to help pay for the Improvement Project 2022-01. The project does not benefit us in any way. In accordance with North Dakota Centric Code, Chapter 402218, protest bar to proceedings, our protest contains all the names of the owners of a separate residential property area, First Street Southwest Block Eight, within the district. We are opposed to the special assessment in whole or in part upon property in our separate property area. And it is signed by myself, by Mr. Ferrara, who owns 106 First Avenue, our First Street Southwest, by Rhonda Kahler, who owns 114 First Street Southwest, and also been signed, there are six owners of the property in the district. We have signatures of the majority of the owners, save the two owners of the commercial properties. The only other property in the district is owned by Mr. Vern Basler, and he is opposed to the Alley Project 2022-01. We have signatures of all four people and the identification of our properties.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else like speak?
After two years of construction, capital city construction destroyed the alley with their side dump semis, telehandlers, and cranes. That alley was never designed to handle that kind of traffic and weight. The city did not even try to maintain the alley as it was deteriorating, and still hasn't done anything to make it drivable. I think West River should be responsible for the project. I would be satisfied if it was put back to gravel, or used to recycle that fall. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, sir, what's your name, please?
Roger Ferrar. I live at 106 First Street Southwest. We got a short alley between I and Ms. Rhonda there, and everything. And I was wondering if you're gonna keep that open, or you're gonna close it, or are you gonna do with that? You closed that, part of that alley when that WRT building was built, I'm sure. I wasn't here then, and construction was all way in full swing when I moved up here. But anyway, I just wondering, it's kinda, you know, that little short alley, everybody's using it now because of the condition of the other alley, but I was just wondering if you're gonna keep it open, and what kind of maintenance you're gonna do on it, or if you're gonna close it? How does that work if you do close that short piece in there? Does that revert back to the homeowners, or do you got, as a city, keep a right of way through there?
Okay. All right. Well, any other comments, then I'll try to answer some of the questions?
I would have a few more things to say. I guess I would like to say that we are all good citizens of Hazen. We recently had a street project that First Street was included in. Our three people together, I can give you a breakdown too, but we paid thirty-one thousand twenty-three dollars for that street improvement project. So it's not that we're trying to get out of our responsibilities as Hazen citizens. This is outrageous that you would think that we should pay for that alley. We don't have access to that alley at all. It's just not, we don't drive in that alley. And I would also like to say that, you know, I talked to the CEO of the phone company. I asked him why you would think that we should pay for it? And he told me he didn't think we should pay for it. Okay? He said it was the city, and I also heard it was the city commission's idea, not his idea. The telephone, West River Telephone Corporation, I did contact them to find out what their profits were last year. They were thirty-six million. I made fifteen thousand dollars. So how do you think that would be fair? I live on social security, that's what I live on. And I already, my house payment after the street improvements went up a hundred dollars a month. So I think it's ridiculous that you should try to balance this project on our backs. We're all older retired people, and we don't need it.
We're not saying it's fair per whatever the income or the revenues that somebody makes, that's not.
Well, it's supposed to be according to how much use we get out of the alley, isn't it? Doesn't it say that in your, in the thing, that proportionate to how, what use you get out of the alley? That's what it says, we should be assessed according to that. And we don't get any use on the alley, we don't use the alley. If we wanna go to the post office, we walk to the post office. And it's ridiculous, the number of trucks that have come through there, working on the West River project. Hundreds and hundreds of trucks have come in there. And I know because they wake me up at seven in the morning, because they're loud. There would be all kinds of loud construction going on there. The, it's, you know, you gotta realize that we didn't destroy the alley. We don't drive in that alley. It's ridiculous that you should think that three people should have, and four people should pay for the equivalent to the people that caused the problem in the alley. It's just not fair. And I don't know how you guys came up with that decision, maybe you could tell me how you made that decision that we should pay for it? Because we are a residential area. We are not part of the commercial area.
So as we, as we discuss this, clearly it was a lot of discussion. It wasn't just a knee-jerk reaction as to how the district was established. But what we looked at is, is when the streetwide, citywide project took place with the street improvements, we took a look at how the districts were established there. And it basically came down to the properties that touched the area of improvement, was how it was done throughout the entire city. So what we looked at when we established this particular district was the same type of philosophy, to be fair then, with how projects had been, and districts had been established in the past.
What does your word "touch" mean?
That means your property comes in contact with the, with the blocks, the blocks that that particular area of improvement resides in.
Well, you just say we're in the same block, not that we have contact with that alley. We have no contact with the alley.
What we did was, we tried to be consistent with the way that the districts were established for the citywide street projects. And there were, what I would consider to be unfortunate situations there as well. We had a family in town that owned a large section of land that hasn't been residentially broken down into lots and stuff like that. But based on the amount of frontage on that property included in that particular district, they also were, they were hit with a very, very large amount for the street project. And I guess my answer to the question on how we established this, we tried to be consistent with ways that had been done in the past on the street, citywide street projects, and that's why the district was established the way that it was.
I think there is a difference though, because we are commercial and we are residential. That makes it different. It's not like we're in an all residential area where we would all touch the alley, and we would all have alley access. I have no alley access whatsoever, and it's not, and Rhonda has no alley access, and Mr. Ferrara has no alley access. We just don't have it, and it's unfair. And it's, this is, the city uses that alley, the city uses it to collect the commercial garbage from the telephone company and the post office. They drive that down that alley, I don't drive down that alley. And the city should come up with other funds. It's, this is a service alley that benefits all the residents of Hazen. I, it's, it's the same with our street, you know? When I spoke about not liking the street improvement cost either, because the majority of my street on First Avenue is parking for the post office and the telephone company, that's who parked there, that's who utilized it. But I had paid all the funds connected to that project too. And it's, we, our street is used by the, they take First Street over to go to the post office and to the telephone company. That's the street they use. It's used for city purposes, it's not used for us. Nobody's coming to visit me and those people that go by my house. It's people that are going to the post office and to the telephone company. That's, it's just, I think there's an idea of fairness here, and you're not being fair.
Thanks for your comments. Yes.
I have a issue with, this is the way we did things in the past. I mean, there should be a new way, I mean, yeah, we did it in the past, but this is different, and it's just, it's just not like that. Something that we don't use, but the whole city has access to and uses, and we're coming to pay for it. It just doesn't make sense, and I think there should be a change.
If I can ask a question too?
Absolutely.
How much would, say you guys go against us, how much would this raise our taxes?
We don't know right off the bat, just because, we don't know how the special assessment committee will divide it up.
Well, you're changing us from commercial, I mean, from residential to commercial, the whole block, is that right?
Monty's, no.
It's already zoned.
It's a commercial.
It's already zoned commercial, okay, I didn't know that, so.
Vern, just to touch on your comment for a moment, this alley has been deteriorating for a long time. It's been before the West River project. We've patched it numerous times, Dave, our street superintendent is sitting back there. It's, we've patched and patched, and there's, even if we turn it back to gravel, it'd be constant improvements as well. And then it'd be really dusty, and then we probably have some complaints about that as well. So when the construction started, we decided not to touch that at all anymore, because why try to improve something or fix it when we know there's gonna be constant traffic, especially heavy trucks and whatnot back there? So that's, that's why we haven't done anything in the last two years.
Well, I can't say you haven't done anything. I don't know who did it, but somebody had hauled dirt into those potholes, and then it was just a big mud mess, so.
Well, but no major, you know, no asphalt has been put in those holes for a while, Dave, unless we've done anywhere corrupt asphalt.
We've put asphalt and whatnot for a while now.
Okay. Sir, back to one of your comments about the short alley that goes down towards the south. It wouldn't be our option to close that alley, that access part, would that remain open?
Are you gonna pave it?
No.
You're gonna leave it there?
Well, the tent right now, Jared, that's not in the scope of changing that, no, that's gonna, that'll remain the same.
What is the purpose of leaving that little short alley open?
Access.
Access to what?
I think whether the block is zoned commercial or not, we meet the bar because we are a separate property. We are a group of residents living in this commercial block. And that will qualify, and I think we meet the bar. We have all of, you only need the majority of the residents in the special area, and we have a hundred percent of the residents in the special area.
How long has, this always been residential? How long ago did you change it from, from commercial to residential, it's always been commercial?
As long as I know, it's been a commercial.
It's been commercial all the while, and approved use within our commercial zoning is a residential property.
Like I say, I'm new here, I didn't know.
You've been there, commissioners, let me comment. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Monty, would you explain the special assessment process quickly, please? You know, if we move forward with this, how that process plays out?
Well, once all the costs and everything, the project is completed, all the costs are calculated, then the special assessment committee takes a look at it, and then assigns a benefit to each property owner. They are the sole determination of what the benefit is to each property owner. Once they've done that, it's published, there's another period for comment, and then it would go to the commission for final review and approval, or any changes or any of that, before it would be assessed. And the actual length of time that you would be assessing that hasn't been established as yet. You guys haven't discussed that, you know, whether it's five years to pay it, ten years to pay it.
Right. Assessment projects can stretch out to, we've got up to twenty years, right, exactly. So that being said, the special assessment committee could, with you and Mrs. Rush, say that your benefit is way less than anybody else is on that block. It's up to that committee to decide what that, what your benefit is.
But none of us on our block, I'm not saying, I, my property is a little bit different, but it doesn't touch anything. What the, it, still, none of us can afford to pay the special assessments. It's ridiculous that you should put it on us.
It's not our, it's not our position to want to add burden to people. It's part of living in a community where it's not, I think, we have to have processes, and I understand some people make as much money as others, and that's, and that, you know, we don't wish to have burden on humans.
The people that own the post office property, which would have given us the majority of the property, they did not get the letter from the city. I guess that, they are lawyers in what we were told originally was Mississippi. And then, when I finally got in touch with somebody late this afternoon, they are in Tennessee, and he got no letter about the property. And so he asked me to fax my letter that I got to him. And so I guess that is, you know, there, if you don't find that this should be barred on, we are a separate property, then you should consider waiting for this gentleman to get back to me, because he said, I talked to another lawyer, but not the lawyer that is Lawrence, I don't know, do you have that name? Okay, Lawrence, just wait here, I'll get it. He is the person that actually owns the property, and he would have to sign it. But he, they weren't opposed to signing my letter, he said. But he would have to take it to the, get in touch with Lawrence before he could do that. But we did fax him a copy of what I got from the city, and so I would say that, I want you to consider that also, that if we have him sign on, we will have the majority of, and we can say no, according to the Centric Code.
Pat, so legally, we posted this publicly, do we have any obligation to wait for another party in this? Do we know that we should continue to try to mail?
No, but I don't think that's the real issue here.
Right.
The real issue is, you know, there was another alternative district that would have excluded those residential areas. And I tend to agree with Ms. Rush, that they are a special area because they really constitute the area that was excluded in one of the proposed districts, and can be excluded from the special assessment district completely, because they certainly have a majority of the owners, and they're canon. The post office and unfortunately, Ron, are in a different position because they're immediately adjacent to the alley, and they stand the benefit from the construction. And then it would be up to the special commission to determine how much that benefit is. So that's how I see it.
So you guys are just really in the starting stage of processing all this.
Well, this isn't our first discussion about this.
Yeah, I understand that. So it might take a little while to get the project kicked off, is what you're saying.
I'm not sure what you're.
Well, I just was wondering if, you know, if you go ahead and go through with it and stuff, and we're still liable for part of that deal. I just wanted to know if I could expect my taxes to go up, you know?
Well, we'd like to get the project underway as soon as possible, since the construction in the alley with West River is now done, so.
Yeah, because that's gonna take, that's gonna shut down a lot of things.
It's not a large project, and it wouldn't take very long, but it all depends on.
Are you gonna street man or asphalt?
It'd be asphalt, notice the concrete, it's concrete.
It wouldn't likely be assessed this year, because with all the hearings and the timeframe from the special assessment committee, we more than likely wouldn't certify those assessments till next fall, so it would be on the next.
Yeah, next tax, taxation, okay.
And plus, the protests do not stop the project unless the majority of the owners of the entire district. So you can continue with your project, but you can exclude those certain areas if you choose to.
Sure. So Pat, if we move forward as is, would, could the special assessment committee still say, even though that all those residential properties are in the district, could they say that they only have one percent or zero percent?
Yeah, they can say what they want, they make a recommendation to you, if you have a final call.
Okay.
You have an assessment committee that does that?
Yep.
Okay.
And that provides the residents another opportunity to protest.
Right.
Can I ask Pat a question?
Sure.
Pat, in the, in 402218 of the protest, would you consider it a separate property?
I would.
You would? That's my point, we are a special, a separate property, and we meet the bar. To have our taxes, us not pay the assessments, the rest of the project can go on. You guys just have to find another means to pay for it, it's only us. It's the way I understood the Centric Code anyway, is that right, Pat?
Well, that term "special area" can mean that there's some sort of a dividing line, which there isn't in our case, it's a true residential. No, it's not necessarily, yeah, well, everyone has access to the alley, so that's not a dividing line, but.
I don't know, it doesn't say that, you know, when you, we tried to.
I know, it just says a special area, yeah.
Separate property is.
Separate, for a separate, yeah.
And when we tried to research what separate property meant, they did not give any idea of that. So I can say we are a separate property according to what the Centric Code is, can't I?
I'm not gonna argue, I'm just saying, I tend to agree with you.
All right, thanks.
Well, I appreciate you guys' time listening to us anyway.
Absolutely, thanks for coming. Any other comments that we have not heard already? If not, we will close the public hearing. And we will now, so what will happen is, we will start our agenda, and we'll go through, and then down further down the agenda, we'll put this topic up here. You're welcome to stay if you want, you're welcome to go.
You're not doing anything to me, then I'll go.
This time, we'll call a regular meeting order, and if everybody's snapped, we'll pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Pillar, would you give us a prayer, please?
Sure, if anyone would bother with it, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the gifts that you give us, and pray that you watch over the activities of this meeting, that the actions taken by this board. can be pleasing to you and help out our citizens here in the city of Pason. And we ask for guidance in all the decisions that we make, in your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, the reading and approval of minutes from August 1st, please.
Motion to approve this.
Thank you, motion by hack. Second, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Any changes? Okay. Move to approve. Okay, motion by Stern to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Pillar, discussion. All in favor of approval of this agenda, say aye, please.
Aye.
Both? Thank you. 5A, engineers report. Jared, reading books.
Aye. All right, so, let's see, I want to just, I don't have too much here, mostly updates, but water storage system project, again, we have three construction contractors, funding's in place. Generally, at a high level, we're still holding weekly construction meetings on Tuesday mornings. DN tanks intends to wrap up the majority of their work for the next three weeks. They want to be out of here, kind of just river out Labor Day. So, I have a time-lapse video, it's kind of cool, I sent it up, I don't know if you guys have seen that yet, you can't get it.
I've never received it.
You didn't get it? Okay.
Maybe it's too big?
It could be, it could be, I might have to put it on some disc or something, but it's kind of cool, it shows them doing all the work up there, so. I'll get that to you, so you can play with it or whatever. Tan Construction is kind of like, you know, mostly done, but they can't do some of the final filling and pressure testing and bacteria testing until the tank's online, so they're coordinating very well. Electrician kind of follows behind, so all, all of our intentions are to close out this project this fall, assuming that DN Tanks gets their work done, Tan gets their work done, and Electrician gets their work done, so. Normal thing for tonight is I have contractor's application for payment number four for DN Tanks, and that should be attached here, three hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Stand for questions or ask them at Google.
The scope including demolition of the existing water storage tank?
Yes, that is in Tan's contract.
Any questions for Jared? Now, let's address the, hey, estimate, please.
Motion two approved.
Number four?
Yeah.
Okay, three forty-seven.
Three forty, three hundred forty-seven thousand, six thirty-six seventy.
Motion by hack. Second by Weidrich, discussion. Roll call.
Hack. Aye, Weidrich.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Owen Allen.
Aye, motion carried.
Okay. What I have for Tan is, I just, I wrote down here, change order number two, I'm not going to ask you this to approve it tonight, this just kind of sums up the deduct that we approved. I wasn't here two weeks ago, it was about negative sixty thousand dollars to not do the ground storage stress or demolition. So, I've told Tan to hold off on it, but the reason I'm not, all in all, we're, I've got a couple of little things to add to it. For instance, I needed two, they're called like mega lugs, we had two male ends of pipe that we had to connect to together on Deapolis, so I think I got like twelve hundred bucks for that. And then, I've got hydrant raising that's like seventeen hundred bucks, we set the hydrant at the northeast side of town in different locations, I had to do a little extension for it. All in all, we're about, so I had, the change order is negative fifty-five thousand dollars. The reason I don't want to approve that yet is, I don't want to do a negative change order and a positive change order, because I think we are still going to probably do some demolition work up there, or we're still going to maybe do some of the hydrants that are old in town. The only reason I'm telling you this, is so you can kind of track the budget, right? We're, we're under budget, Tan knows not to do it. Because of the funding that's in place, I don't really want to do a big negative change order and then a big positive, just so we don't jeopardize any funding, right? So, I just, I think we should get a couple of hydrants done that are old, defer to date a little bit on exactly what location they are, because we did that with Tan once already, and it, it went well, it was approved, so I think we should keep going. You, sixty percent grant done, you know, on this project, so we can get water system improvement work done, and, so anyway, I just want you to be thinking, or, or direct me to do something. Do you want quotes on, on doing some additional work here, so we can get Tan to do it, when they come to do the pressure testing and the, the filling and all that kind of stuff? So, yes?
So, I guess reservoir and out in the state, I guess I've heard that ever since last meeting.
At the meeting two weeks ago, I think you guys voted to leave it, right? Like to, yep.
Bring it to leave it.
So, there's, there's a, there's a.
Yeah, in the ground room.
I don't think.
It wasn't voted, it was just, it was just a direction to not proceed with it at this time.
Okay, okay. So, what we have is, we have the building, and we have the, there's a small reservoir underneath the building, and then we have a large underground ground storage reservoir outside. You're right, I, I guess I forgot about that. If we're going to look at doing something, Tan will do the work, we just told him to hold off, so you guys have some time to think about it, or, or talk about it, or, or whatever. The scope of work is to cut it off three feet below ground, fill it with dirt, bury it, just turn that area into a parking lot.
One of the areas of discussion two weeks ago, is we were going to follow up to see at what level the top of that underground storage facility was at. There, there were thoughts that it might be pretty much right in line with the, with the alleyway, but I, I had never heard the, the feedback on that.
Dave, did you guys check, see how far up it went?
Yeah, if a guy looks all back on this back north, west, east corner, you can see the actual concrete, it's probably a foot, maybe a foot and a half higher than the alleyway.
Higher than the alleyway?
You and John looked into that, right?
Yeah.
You guys, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, if you drive it down the alleyway after the mission meeting, you'll see the flop gate, overflow, and the concrete is just a little bit higher than that, should be the top that we didn't shovel anything off, pretty good corner each floor.
Okay. Any else casing that?
Well, I'd just like to know, maybe two, I guess, are we going to sell that property, or are we going to not sell it?
Well, I think we want to try to figure out the value of that property, but, yeah, obviously, we don't want to keep the property. But, you know, we talked to Pat also about if, you know, there are conditions that we could put on there, if we sell it, we don't want a junkyard sitting there, you know, and I mentioned, I know we have some control, but, you know, and then we talked about, does that, does that condition then follow the sale after that? Say Tan bought it, and then they sold it, and the, would the conditions stay on there?
I have a question. The change order requested by a resident to elevate a hydrant?
No, 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 we directed them to do that. So, we, there was a hydrant at the end of one of the streets that we salvaged and relocated, and because of the location we put it in, put it in a little different spot, the ground was sloping up.
Oh.
So, it's really easy to raise a hydrant, but it's really hard to lower a hydrant, so you can buy an intermediate section.
The written report says it was requested by a resident.
Sorry. Okay.
Is that the one by Novak? On the end of the list?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
I guess, I guess a reservoir, then, that's what date do we need to go by, I guess?
That's a good question. I don't have an exact date yet, but what do you think, well, I guess when we talked a couple of weeks ago, we thought if, if we'd let them know in a few weeks or a month, that they would be fine with that. If you're going to advertise that, you know, publish to sell it, or if we have some path forward, I think they'd be okay with that. Maybe not, you know, it's just wide open or anything. What, what are you thinking? You want to?
I'm just thinking, if we leave it as is, say we sell it, is there any binding ties to liability issues? If something was to happen, if we left it as is to the city, Pat? If you don't fill the reservoir, you sell it, something happens, it caves in, I, I'm just thinking kind of outside, yeah. I think what we've heard from more engineering at this point, with regard to that reservoir, is that we, we were looking at demoing that, just because we had a sixty-fourty funding on this thing here, but that from the standpoint of it potentially falling in, there's, there's nothing to indicate that there's, there's any structural integrity issues with it. As a matter of fact, contrary to that, they, they stipulated that if you take that dirt off the top of it, you could park a fleet of vehicles on there, and it, and it would be robust enough to, to support that, so.
A hundred years from now? I don't know. Right, right now, it's in pretty good shape.
Right. I, I don't think there's any reason to, to believe that there's any issues with that. I would think it would be similar to selling your home, and then, you know, ten years from now, the home collapses or something like that. Are you liable?
Yeah.
I think that it would be a similar situation here, but I don't know the legality of it.
We have a contractor that has offered to buy it from you, and we've told him no, because the city has to, it's a public building, right, Pat? You have to publish it and advertise and sell it publicly against that, so. Kind of just told him to hold off the demolition until you guys had a chance to talk about it. I can certainly buy a little more time, but they'll want to know, you know, this fall, let's do it there.
Right. And I, I, you know, finishing up the, the interior of that building, that for sure, then, I'd rather try to market it and list it, and put it up for bids and sell the thing, not, I don't know, not continue to work on it, the demo.
Yeah, we have, we'll have a clear path of where we'll stop.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah.
But we won't, we won't tear into that reservoir if you don't want to.
I, I would say we just, we let Tan know that, that the reservoir is going to be, no, if we need to remove the dirt, we can remove the dirt off that, can we, Dave? That's, remove the dirt up top of that thing.
Yeah, we want it out there, yeah, that's my commit. Between other projects, we did try to put off of there, I believe.
I guarantee, I bet there's like three feet of dirt on it.
Yeah.
Probably in the middle, three feet. Or four. Yeah.
Okay.
I guess even if we tear up the dirt, it is, it's like, it's.
Might make it more marketable, the parking area, I don't know, probably nothing.
I mean, like, I'd like to see it gone, even if we have the opportunity to. Get on the pasture, and you know.
You know, I think I see, I mean, maybe decent top sweat, you know, I.
Yeah. Not enough, not enough to rent home, though.
I know, I'm, I'm flame flaming in my own mind, because we asked the question, you take the dirt off, what value is it? But I would, I would also pose the question, if you spend sixty thousand dollars, or forty percent of that, what are we gaining by, by demoing that out of there as, as well? I don't, I don't know, does that building become more marketable with that, that little segment of alleyway? I, I don't know.
I mean, I think the city always wants to, I mean, always wants to, I guess, always want, always wants, I guess, all the stuff, I guess. Cleaned up around town, you know. I think it's now we have a chance here to clean this up, I mean. I mean, I don't think it looks good.
Well, it's not really.
An eyesore, though.
I, I, I don't think it's an eyesore, you know, it's.
Well, it's not right now.
No.
I mean, I mean, if you want to sell it, that part of the, part of the lot, I don't know what they're going to do with it.
Whose liability is any collateral damage during the demolition of that? I mean, that, that's by and large, I think, what they're, they, the contractor, are most concerned on, they start beating that concrete around and stuff, they're, they voiced in our construction meetings, concerns of cracking foundations of adjacent properties and different things like that, and there's been conversation that those type of projects have happened in the past, and they've seen those type of damages. I guess my question is, who's, who's responsible for, for anything that might happen?
So, we have a construction contract, they bid on the demolition of the building, and so the scope of their work is to saw, cut it off, and then demolish the top of it. So, I would say that if they destroyed an adjacent building, they would have to turn it to their insurance company. I guess the insurance company could say that, we could argue about it, but it would be, my intention is that they would, it would be their fault, if they destroyed something else, but I would, it's probably not perfect.
Sure. And I think that became part of the, the conversation, the concern on whether or not there, there could potentially be damage to City Hall, you know, the restaurant across the street, and the adjacent property across the alley there.
Yeah, and I mean, that, there is a risk, I've had, we've had damage on other buildings, and, you know, it's always going to be the contractor to take care of it, but I guess anything can happen. We've tried to photograph everything within a block of, of here, and see if there's any foundation cracks or anything, you know, pre-existing, so we can identify it.
Well, in legal theory, they would have to be negligent somehow, so they would have to have at least fifty-one percent of the responsibility for creating those damages through their own negligence, um, in demolition, if they fulfilled their.
Right. That, that's my concern, because there, there's methods in, in which it's used actively on a day-to-day basis out there by companies that do demolition, and if they do everything by the letters of what's.
They don't have any liability.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so then, where you got the sixty, forty there, we're paying forty percent, that forty percent could become greater if, if we see collateral damage.
I guess what's the process? On the cut there?
Saw cutting it? Cutting the reservoir?
Cable cutting it, or saw cutting it?
Saw cutting it, yeah. So, I, I specified that it had to be cut three feet below ground, hundred percent all the way around, and, and the left buried, or the smooth edge all the way around. I don't know what tool they would use, if, they would do it from the outside, do it from the inside, I would imagine they'll execute on the outside and, you know, cut it around that way. That just makes sense to me.
And then, they're just going to physically drop the roof on the end of the tank and bury it?
Uh, it has to get, no, they can't leave, the concrete roof has to go, so they'll have to cut that up and break it up all the way, but they're going to fill it in with dirt. Yeah, they can't leave it in there.
So, then, there's really not going to be any kind of, it's massive, I guess.
They're not bringing a wrecking ball in. They're not using explosives. I'm sure there'll be jackhammering, and, you know, if you, you watch executed demolition, they'll have a whole, like, you know, something that vibrates.
Maybe we should get the name of that outfit that worked out at your facility, that did that, that particular cutting like that, and give it to them, and let them maybe look at that, maybe it's money well spent for them to sub that out or something.
Okay. Let me know.
Sure, sure. Sure.
Then, then I think that would make probably good sense.
Yeah.
So, generally, though, where we're at is, it's, you know, we can either continue with the demolition, and then do what you want with the building, or not do the demolition, and do what you want with the building, right? I mean, either way, if you want to sell it, you still have to advertise it and do something with it, it's just, what do we do with the reservoir?
So, we don't have to take any action right now?
You don't have to, but I'm going to be bugging you in two weeks, probably.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. Three weeks, not too sad.
Yeah, sure. Five, five days.
I guess if you think there's a value in that, that we're screwing up by getting rid of it, I could see leaving it. I don't know, I don't know what business would value that, I guess, so, I don't know.
But first, when we were thinking, might be a.
But first, when we were thinking of high ground level, you remove the dirt, you basically have a concrete parking lot. Now that it's a foot, possibly upwards, two foot above ground level, it can really work for that. I mean, you could build a ramp off the east side and put guardrails up and stuff. You're going to stick a bunch of money into it and not gain a whole lot.
Yeah, I don't know how much value there is for a parking concrete pad back there.
If it's at ground level, if that's the concrete, the rest of it, turn it all into one big parking lot. That would be nice. Maybe into a restaurant and that's outdoor eating.
I have good ideas, so I'm going to have to do it.
Only takes money.
All right.
Okay, bug us in three weeks.
Okay, I'm going to bug you in on it in three weeks and what, to the left or right. All right. Then the one other thing is Key Contracting was in town here this last week. If you recall, last year we hired them to rehab three manholes and work on one of the lift stations. So they did that all trenchless. I have not inspected them yet. What we do is we send a three sixty camera down there to look at the work they did. They'll then send you the invoices and then we recommend payment at the next meeting. So from hearing the guys talk and hearing our people talk, it sounds like you did a good job. And, but we'll just double check to make sure there's no leaks and recommend payments when it comes. And just circling back on that alley stuff, we did get a quote from Mail back in two thousand eighteen to redo that alley. So that alley has been in really bad shape for a long time. It's not like it's a new problem. Right now we have a quote from Winkler to pave that alley, right? That's the.
Yeah, to do concrete.
Concrete, yep. And we, so as of right now, I'm under the impression that we're supposed to proceed with that. Should we give the contractor a notice to, a notice to proceed? Or should we just kind of wait until we? No, wait.
No, I'd rather proceed much. But that's just me, I can't speak for it, right?
Seventy-five thousand dollar project, that includes legal, engineering, construction. Construction bid is like fifty-five or something like that. So if we want to do it, then I will send the contractor a notice to proceed and then we'll pay bills on that this fall and assess it next summer.
Well, if you want to proceed, then you just make a motion, proceed with that.
I know you can do it when you do that.
Or go and wait for the resident, okay. Okay.
Listen on that.
Thanks, Jared.
Thank you, guys.
TAN's pay estimate?
Oh, I'm sorry. TAN's pay estimates, Contractor's Application for Payment Number Seven, seventy-three thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Motion to approve. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar, aye. Stern?
Aye.
Pat?
Hi, Weider.
Aye.
Omenhor.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Five B is improvement project district. Let's jump down to five C, the condemnation inspection proposal. I'll let these guys get out of here.
We won't take a whole lot of your time.
So jump out, step out of here, so you guys are up. Okay, welcome.
I don't think I've ever swum in here for one of your guys' meetings before. My name is Shirley Ankins, I'll just hand out my card for all you guys. I brought with me Kevin Koboda, he works with us in our Buell office. And.
First time meeting you too, right Pat?
Yes.
Well, you must be Monty. So I'm putting together as I sit back here. We heard from Monty, what was that event, three weeks ago now, three weeks?
Three weeks.
Yeah, and I guess there was a question that came up regarding condemnation, you guys maybe are dealing a little bit with or inspections maybe perhaps in general. So I provided some feedback of what we typically do, you know, for some of our municipalities that we work with. And I was asked to kind of come and discuss it a little further with you guys. So what we, what we typically have provided are legal councils. We've done this with City Buell, City Holiday. We do it over in the Bismarck area as well, Bismarck, Handan area, Dickinson area. Letters of professional opinion, we will go in, well, actually, if we're, if we're asked to go and inspect a resident or a commercial building, Kevin's our certified building inspector. And they'll go in and assess the structure, whether it's dwelling, non-d dwelling, if there's someone currently living there or not living there, before you guys even begin the process. A lot of times we work with legal counsel to really determine the scope of what that looks like. What do they need to, you know, help represent the city in those situations? So every situation's a little different, you know, it's not cookie cutter, right? You know, you run into different situations all the time with different structure types or houses or whatever it may be. Oftentimes it's pretty cut dry, you know, if it's being, if it's condemnation is being brought up, some of this stuff's going to be rather obvious, what we're, what we're dealing with. But our letter, and our letter's a professional opinion and I can provide maybe an example, a copy of those, I can send them to a duty volunteer or something, that you can share with the commission at some point in time. But, you know, we, we, we're, it's very black and white, right? There's no gray area involved, especially structural engineers, they're really good at that stuff. So sometimes the structure might not necessarily need to be tore out. Maybe it just, there may be one element of it, just because it's, you know, uneasy on the eyes or something, that maybe it needs some cosmetic upgrades, sure, but is the structure okay? You know, we can answer those questions, whether they're invasive, non-invasive, whatever it may be. I think that kind of dictates the time involved. But a lot of times I say we, you know, we accomplish these things for our clients five hundred bucks or less and it doesn't sound like they're really expensive, but who do? So.
How do you gain access to a home?
Oftentimes the, in the condemnation situation, if there's someone currently living there, their legal team has actually reached out and, but via the police department, I believe. They deliver that information, said that the, you know, the inspection needs to occur, you need to allow this to happen and we've gone ahead. And we look at that situation. That's rare. I have not, we have, we don't run into that very often. A lot of times the stuff we run into, it's vague, but there's an owner, somebody, you know. But that's kind of in a nutshell what, you know, what we can offer up for you. You know, be more than happy to visit on it more if you guys have more questions or whatever. Take the opportunity just to, like, to see our open mugs and stuff like that, but.
So on a condemnation, after you guys do your report, do you come in and in detail explain reports, photos?
We can, absolutely. There's no reason why we can't. I think we leave that up to you as the client. If you would, if you prefer that, if you'd like that, absolutely. There's no reason why we can't. If it's, if it's, you know, give it to Pat, wipe her hands clean and if you need us to explain further, great. I mean, we'd do that too. Kevin's, you know, Kevin's, I mentioned certified building inspector, so he's a project technician for us. So he'll go in and identify code-specific issues, right? But if it involves the need and necessity for an engineer, like a structural engineer or something, we get, we get one of our structural engineers involved or myself. But oftentimes that's minimal, sometimes not even necessary. It just depends on the situation.
Other questions for Kevin or Charlie?
Yeah. I was just going to ask, you brought your fee schedule for share.
I did. I did. I have to thank you for reminding me. Kevin, do you have your card?
Yeah.
I'll give them, let me give them one of your cards. And so Kevin's, you'll see in here, he's a tech too. So that's tech, that's what he built out of. So you guys are aware of it. This goes pretty much for, if anybody you'd be working with with us, it would be, uh, we have another engineer in our office too, here in Buell, I say locally, but. I'm familiar, uh, familiar, you guys are with interstate engineering, but, I mean, we got offices kind of sprinkled all over the state and five state area. I know Moore's got it, I don't know if we got as many offices as you guys do, but we're, we're kind of sprinkled all over the place. Would you like a copy as well, Monty?
Please.
Yeah. Yeah, so I guess I urge anyone with any questions, don't hesitate, I'll just, if you don't mind.
So what do you guys, what do you guys find is the biggest holdup when you're doing this process? Because obviously it's timely and.
Yep.
What are you, what's your biggest roadblock?
For us, if I'm being pretty honest with you, we don't necessarily get in the green light because that often comes from the legal, legal, the legal council in the city. Our, you know, our approach to it is pretty, pretty quick and painless, really. It's not just waiting to get the green light. On the backside of things, we've never been pulled in from, you know, legal counsel to ask assist on any legal matter that is not necessarily, in my experience. I shouldn't speak on behalf of the firm, that very, you know, it's very possible that that's happened in our firm, but for me, that hasn't happened.
Kevin, what's the average timeframe that you, that it takes you to do your inspection?
It would vary widely, I like, I mean, what, what are we looking at here? I mean, a five-bedroom, three-bathroom home.
Two-bedroom, trash apartments, complex.
Apartment. Yeah. Hour, hour and a half.
Yeah.
For the inspection and then, you know, go back and depending on how detailed you want the report to be, you know, photos and.
Right.
I'd say that's pretty fair, it's probably on average.
And you're the tech two, you said on the, on the skip rate?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Casey? So then on the mileage then, where would that start from? I guess Buell.
Some Buell over here. We're there, we're not, yeah, we're not, that's where it'll be coming from. Yep. All of the eight mile or whatever it is between here and there.
Seven.
Seven, yeah, seven, yeah.
Any other thoughts, questions for you guys? Thanks for bringing us over, we appreciate it. We will be in contact and we, we got work to do in our community and we, it'd be nice to have a bit more of a professional standard, I think.
Sure. Yeah, happy to help wherever we can, so.
Appreciate you coming, please, sir. All right, we'll get out of here guys in a second.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll head back to five B, improvement project district resolutions. Well, I think the public hearing was a lot of concern and it's somewhat rightly so. So I guess a question I have, I guess, do they then, I guess, like meet this bar thing, Pat? Both their special.
That's special area? You know, that's, they can only offer an opinion. It's like Cheryl said, there's really no definition as to what that is, so. But from the engineering reports and from their recommendations, they did provide a district that did not include those residential properties. So it seems that it's, could be considered a special. It's up to you folks.
Jared?
It's kind of a unique situation, most alleys just go straight through the block. This is a T alley, so I guess if, you know, when we're doing an alley that's straight through, everybody that fits from it, on a T alley like this, I guess I could, you could still probably say that they, I don't care either way, right? But if they use that T, I mean, how are they going to get out of the alley? They probably don't use it as much as everybody else, so I would argue that their benefit is much less. But if you drove in the alley on that T segment, you probably need to exit some way out through the other way. So I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer, Pat.
I know when you, when you travel around the city, the typical alleyway, when I found out alleys, most of the properties that are on those alleys have maybe sheds or garages in the back and stuff like that. They utilize them, the alley, to access those particular areas. You know, the girl that spoke tonight, there, there's no access to the alley from the property that she lives on. I mean, it.
None of those three?
Yeah.
The one guy actually does, technically it's not to the alley, it would be onto the post office property.
Did you bet Chikovski's?
Well, it goes to the alley because they're both plaid alleys.
Well, he would be beside, but to the rear it wouldn't. Cause he's got a fence back there, but that would actually go onto the post office's property, not the physical alley.
Which one of those, is the gentleman in the.
Mr. Harar.
Is he in Chikovsky's home? The one right beside Cheryl?
So he would have on the side, but technically no back access either because it would go onto somebody else's property. So none of them would have actual direct contact with an alley at all, what we.
Right, of what we're going to work on.
Yeah.
And even if you proceed as most, you're still left to wait for the assessment commission to do their work. And then you can make adjustments then if you choose to, you know, so you have other opportunities. But they did make a strong argument.
Well, and ballot argument too.
So again, we, we would have time to address it after the, yeah, so we could proceed and then address it.
We could still proceed, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Great.
And is, is it wrong for, for us to have discussions at all with the assessment committee to voice an opinion when they, when they go into their deliberation discussions and?
Well, I think they should be, because they are attempting to assign benefit to their property.
And once they made their recommendation, you still have the opportunity to make changes.
Yes.
And so does your policy differentiate between residential and commercial or?
I don't know if that makes a difference at all. It's benefit to the property, that's the standard, that's the legal standard. So if property benefits from the improvement, then they can be assessed. If there really is no benefit, you know, then.
But if we change the district, if we change the boundaries of the district, right? We have to wait another, two more meetings, right? And for more protesting again.
You know, that's unclear. I don't think.
I've never seen anything, everyone's who published it. And if you increase the district, I think you would have to.
Yeah, diminish, right.
But we could reduce it.
So in reducing it and the parties that are in that district, is it exclusively then West River Telephone?
No.
No, well.
Be the post office and Vern Basler.
This is the one that.
So the post, that, that's, okay. So that's Ern's building there, the post office and West River Telephone.
They included postal property, Vern's building and West River. Could be able to blue light the building towards eastwards.
Yeah.
I've seen assessment committees factor in traffic impacts as well in order to determine benefits. That's common, I guess, so it could be some discussion to have about that.
About traffic.
Yep, because you're, we're building a concrete alley instead of an asphalt alley, which is more robust, beefier. And so the argument is they were building a more expensive alley because of the traffic generated by somebody else. So they could keep that into.
Which will likely be.
Which will likely be postal.
Traffic.
Yes, when they have two trucks a day going in and out.
And citizens dropping mail off and byes, yeah.
Now, Troy said, you know, now that construction is done, the amount of traffic for West River Telephone in that alley is pretty much diminished as well because there...
Well, we're up there, we can address that.
Because the parking is really not there. There's, there's a little bit of parking spot. I'm not even sure that anybody parks back there now.
Just a couple of vehicles, basically, because I think park, the parking arm hasn't been completed on the other end.
Sure.
But there is a few company vehicles that have currently...
The handful.
Yeah, handful.
And I know part of our discussion early on was there's a lot of streets in our city that any number of people drive on it, not just the people that live in those. But when we did the, the project for street improvements and it was assessed out, it wasn't assessed to the whole city. It was assessed to those properties that were in contact with them. And that was, you know, the methodology that was used. And that's where we were attempting to be somewhat consistent with, with the way that that was done. And as opposed to saying, hey, anybody and everybody in the city can go up and down this alleyway. We chose at the time to develop the district to, again, be consistent with how we did the city project.
Well, I think we're all on the same page right now on what we think is appropriate. And I know that our special assessment committee are sharp people and will be very conscious of the situation. Well, if we leave the district the way it is, those boundaries, there's a chance that those residents could get some tax burden put on them. There is also possible that they may just say, well, we say zero benefit, they could zero it out. So either we take a chance by leaving the boundaries the way they are or reducing the boundary to just include West River, the Vern Basers building and the post office. And then those people will not, there will be no risk of them getting any tax burden. Although I know that, I guess, out of those three then, I guess Burke said, no. Yeah. Yeah. And then maybe a little more of a share then, possibly. And maybe, you know, since he doesn't live there, since it started building, the committee might say, well, he doesn't access the street building. I mean, who knows? I don't know. Maybe he's there every night. If I had what's in that building, I'd be there. But... So we want to leave the district the way it is, the way the zone, well, we have the boundaries or you want to make change or just move forward as is and leave it in the hands of our special assessment committee?
So West River Telephone was not here for the preliminary meeting or were you...
Yeah, they were.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to make comment, if wanted.
Casey. So I feel on this project that feel, you know, the special... That special assessment board, you know, is going to split up the cost, you know. I don't think they're going to split it up unfairly. Even if the board says, our board says that it is, it is unfairly. Our board can then, you know, just make changes to it. Yep, we can.
And, and I'm on board with, with Casey there. I know I approved it initially with the idea that the special assessment committee would be the ones responsible for allocating those costs appropriately based upon the value obtained by each of those properties. And I think we, I think we accomplished two things with the way that we did it. We're consistent in how we identified the districts in light of how we did it with the citywide street projects. And in that regard, those citizens that maybe felt they got maybe overtaxed or whatever on the street projects, wouldn't be able to come back and say, well, wait a minute. You know, you listened to, to these people here and then made a change. I think we, we stay consistent and we rely on our special assessment committees to make prudent decisions on how they allocate those costs. And then if we're not comfortable with how it's allocated, then we can have further discussions at that time.
I was going to ask Pat, if like Dan said we need to, if we're not comfortable, can we narrow it down to this option district?
Yeah, you can remove areas from the district.
Like say if we leave it as is?
Well, if you leave it as is, then the special assessment committee will make a recommendation to you based on what they think the benefit to the property is.
And there again, that, that's the recommendation. I know when we did the street project, there was discussion concerns on some of the districts and maybe the feelings of the residents that they were unfairly treated. And we could have, as board, basically trumped what the recommendation of the special assessment committee was and made a statement that it would be whatever it is that the board approved. Not to suggest at all that the special assessment committee is not going to do due diligence to give us something that we're going to be comfortable with.
But we can do have that authority.
Yeah, we can narrow it down. They would just have to reassess the three parties. If we go with option two of the district, which is...
They've done nothing at this point.
No.
I know that, but when they come back, if we leave it as the district is out and it's high to these residents, right? Or we feel, we can get a second opinion from the assessment committee based off of the second option district of West River, the postal service and Vern's building, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the way you're phrasing it is a little different, but you always have the last stab at it, so.
Yeah, so if you don't agree with, with the special assessment committee came up, but you don't really need to change the district, you just change the benefit.
Right, you just change the assessment, right?
You'd reduce the, you'd shift the cost.
And, yes, don't do the math.
Right.
So then Monty, do we need a motion to approve the resolution forward with the boundaries as is?
Yeah, basically, if you're not making any changes to the boundaries, the draft resolutions I created should be fine.
So we do need a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to move forward with boundaries already.
Alright, motion by Weidrich. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Weidrich, aye. Stern?
Aye.
Hatt? Aye. Hiller? Aye. One hour.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.
One, one, two. Dan, I'm not telling you how to do your job.
At all.
I think it would be prudent that there, there be at least some discussion in there that, that the board is relying on the special assessment committee to, to be diligent. I don't, I don't want to put the monkey on there, back. And maybe that's not fair to...
Yeah, we don't want them to take all the heat.
What it's like to get people to serve on that board? I don't, I don't, I don't.
There's a reason.
We lost one already?
I, I agree, yeah, I agree.
Six A, three closure requests, Hazen Chamber.
People's Harvest Fest events.
Yes.
During the parade, they'll be closing basically everything from up by Senex all the way around Main Street. And then it'll just be from Port Me to IBW for the beginning events.
Yep.
Just like in the past, just like in the past.
Motion approved.
Motion by Hatt.
Aye.
Second by Weidrich, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Six B, local permit, raffle, prayer, roast cart. Take a motion to...
And this will also be done during the Harvest Fest. Motion to approve the raffle.
Okay, motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Hiller, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Seven A, nuisance noise ordinance, engine brakes. I brought this up to Monty about a week ago. We talked about this. With the increased sand fracking traffic we have and the, the Basin Electric coal hauling right now, even last night when I was sitting on my deck, I can hear them coming from, they start breaking their air brakes at the top of the hill by the airport and roll all the way into town. Not every, not every truck, but it's happening a lot. I've had a couple of citizens as well that have, around there, expressed their concern. So we don't have a sign that says no jake brake coming into town, though.
We don't? Okay.
No.
Says noise ordinance.
Just says noise ordinance, correct. So, um, Monty, you contacted DOT?
Actually, the only one I visited with so far was Steve.
Steve, okay.
And he said there were issues because our ordinance doesn't directly refer to the engine brakes. So they basically just put that sign up there saying the noise ordinance, but...
So we need to change our, we're needing our ordinance to...
If you want to, then you can set a specific dollar amount for that. There's penalty for that then as well. So yeah, it would require a change of our ordinance. Would, would the signage remain the same then or would you put a different...
Different signage.
Then you would be able to do the engine brakes.
And then it would be enforcement, you know, then that's the other thing. Just, um, we'd have to make sure that we deal with it when it happens, so. And I think those guys are very respectful and they see those signs and they come into communities, so, but it's...
So since I'm not a truck driver, in those communities where they have those signs come in, what, what's their alternative for slowing down?
You use your brake. Okay, so you're take, by taking jake brakes away, you're taking the safety feature away from that truck.
Yep.
I'm completely against it. I live right over by 200 and never once has it bothered me. I, when I'm inside my house, I have never heard anybody's jake brakes. When I'm outside in the yard working, yes, I do hear them. It's the rules of, I mean, if you live out in the country, you hear them too. Up by my dad's place, you hear them all the time up there. We're going to put a no jake brake sign up in the middle of the country? No, we can't. We can't. But say the county, would they? No, they wouldn't. To me, you're taking a safety feature away from that truck. Now you're relying on your brakes, which is the most critical part of a truck. You overheat them and they fade, you know, something bad could happen. Especially when you're coming down the hill at a hundred, a hundred thousand plus pounds and you're hauling hazmat, you have to stop at that railroad crossing and you're relying solely on your brakes, that's a lot.
The argument there though that I have is that these frac trucks are regular occurrences coming through our town.
This ain't just pulling them back.
You're, you're right, but that's the majority of what it is. That's, the majority of the truck traffic through our community will be the frac trucks for the next, how, how long? They're running 24 hours a day. We've got three frac sanding facilities. They know that the speed needs to be reduced for, thank you. They know that the speed needs to be reduced. It's not like they're coming to the hill before the bridge and they got a slam on it just to slow down. I agree, and it might be a safety factor, but I think an experienced truck driver who's on that route knows what, knows the expectation as well. And we're not in a mountainous area.
We're not. And where, where do you put the sign so that it affords the truck driver the opportunity to slow down sooner?
I think we need DOT for, for that information.
I didn't, I didn't know if there was something that said you had to be at city limits or, or if you could do it outside of city limits as you're, as you're heading in. I don't...
I would, I would assume it'd be where the speed, reduced speed sign is or to be up on the hill.
The sign now is actually towards the east then. Oh, not that the speed limit sign, so.
I don't know. I know you can't use jake brakes, so you can't have that on your sign.
Yeah. The way our ordinance is right now.
Could use some other...
Yeah, engine brake. I respect your opinion, but I, I think it's...
I'm, I'm kind of with Dustin too. I mean, I don't hear them, but strange you can hear it somehow.
That's another thing with the noise ordinance, you know, reading through what Monty sent us. I mean, according to this, you can be fined for yelling across the street at somebody after 11:00 PM. That's a little ridiculous. You know, and in this one, but now we did say is, um, emergency situations, you aren't allowed to use your jake brakes. Who gets to determine that it's an emergency situation? Now we're back on the junk car ordinance. Who gets to determine a junk car? If you guys do want to do an ordinance, it's got to be clear cut. I, I can tell you, I'm going to be strongly against it.
Oh, another thing to add, if we're going to have four facilities, how with frac trucks, we only have one policeman on duty, they're going to bail the police. That and other situations. They get everybody enforced. I, I see both sides, but I, I'm worried on traffic.
Have we, have we reached out to those organizations to just voice some, some concern and ask if they would, you know, consider?
I don't believe we have. I know when, when Tyler Hammond from Basin Electric got ahold of me and told us about the coal, that was my concern. I told him that please have your drivers not use that if possible and to please watch speed limits, that's especially during school starting up soon, that's a lot of traffic, pedestrians. That's when we could reach out to them and talk.
I would say speed limit for sure. I could see that happening, but...
Well, I mean, you can definitely tell that that speed limit is abused. That drops down to 55 right at the airport there somewhere. Most people don't slow down until they get to the train tracks.
That's every entrance into the city. I watch it, I watch it coming from the north as well. There were two real, there were a 25 on that 25 side.
And that goes back to our law enforcement. Not enforcing the rules that we already have, do we need to add more that they're not going to enforce? Well, how many times you drive through Main Street and somebody do a U-turn on Main? It happens all the time. Even though there's signs everywhere.
But they can't be everywhere.
True.
They can't be everywhere. But that doesn't mean we can't have expectations. We just have no rules. I mean, but I, you know, I, I was approached by citizens. I here at my yard, and I don't even live on 200, you know, so I can see how it can be an issue. And I think it's just with our frac services, we're going to have a lot of, a lot of trucks, so if we do this for now, if, if we bring it up and if nothing else, like Dan mentioned, we should contact those businesses.
You know, if we have the leadership of this city, get in contact with, with the folks and see if they, in their, in their toolbox, safety meetings or whatever, they could have some discussion on that and just say, hey, Hazen would, would appreciate us, you know, working with them. And at this point, they do have a noise ordinance and it would be nice if they didn't have to make the teeth sharper, if everybody could play nice together in the sandbox.
I like that idea. And then we can always touch bases. Say the truck traffic does get absolutely nuts and it is a real bad problem, then we can maybe move forward with this, put in ordinance together at that given time.
And, and there you're still responding to the concerns of the citizens and hopefully accomplishing what, what we're looking to accomplish.
And under that noise ordinance we already have, is there a set like time of day that's ineffective? Like 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM?
Basically, our noise ordinance is mostly go from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
So under that noise ordinance, engine brakes would be considered, especially if they have straight pipe and they're inside city. and they're inside city limits. You know, so technically we kinda already do, but that would be up to the discretion of the police officer, whether it's violating that noise ordinance. You know, not all trucks are allowed when they get on the engine brake. Certain ones are. You know, you get a lot of them bull haulers, they like their big, big stacks that are straight pipe and loud and stuff. They get on the engine brake, yes, it's loud. A lot of these frac sand trucks, you're hardly gonna even notice that they're loud.
If I don't hear a motion to change their, the wording of their ordinance, then at the least we'll contact those businesses. So, I'm gonna wait just a minute and see if we hear a motion.
Or you can make one.
I don't make motions.
You can make a motion.
Okay. Then let's say we will find out the names of those businesses and we can get that from the county. I'm assuming with their, and contact them. All right. Thanks for the input, I appreciate it. Moving on to eight A, real estate purchase auction at North Park Vision. Monty, you want?
Steven Neal and Mary Neal have submitted an option to purchase four lots up on Devilwood Drive.
Thank you, Terry.
Uh, this would be lots thirty-five and thirty-six. Turn my app here. Whoops. Thirty-five and thirty-six and lots six and seven up there on Devilwood Drive. Basically, as we've done in the past, these are priced based on these special assessments that the city has paid and them assuming the balance of the special assessments for the time that is still out there. Mrs. Neal was in this morning and signed the auction agreement and did pay for all four lots in full rather than the ten percent that was requested.
And that's on Kevin's side, right?
Two of them are.
Two of them are and two are on the other side.
Two are, James Taylor's preference. What are their intentions, Monty, does she say?
They are looking for a contractor to build a home on at least two of them and then they're gonna, if they can, kinda spec out another one and try it out.
So, they, for both of them, are they looking to build and resell or they?
They are actually, from my understanding, is they were intending to occupy at least one.
Do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, you didn't.
I'll take one more question. That's not the ones that Peterson's over, correct?
No, he's where, he's where the cities.
Extra sold those.
Yeah.
He's where the cities, so.
Okay.
But Dave wants to keep mowing those.
He's still got money in that here.
Okay, we need a motion to approve these, the sale. Motion by pillar.
Sorry.
Second by Wade, your discussion.
The only question I have is, who owns this lot here?
Must've quoted them up there.
Okay.
And this lot.
How about that one there?
That is, uh, Oasis.
Is it Oasis?
Yeah.
Yeah, Oasis.
Yeah.
Three next adjustments.
Oh, we appear that they hold it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is everything gonna be, I mean, like split up fairly nicely where?
Yeah. This, this lot seven is a little messy because it goes behind that other lot so far, but...
Is there any stipulation on this, that they have to start construction in a certain time?
No.
No. That would be when it used to be?
Yeah, that would be when they get their build in permit, they have to start construction within six months.
Yeah, we have a motion and we have a second, continue our discussion. Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Weider.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Owen R.
Aye. Motion carried.
E B, variance request. I mean, this is down on First Street Southwest between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue. Mr. Palmer wants to just extend, there is an extension over their deck in this area. He wants to put a carport and in fact, the carport is done. As you can see, there are, neither property owner down there is the ten feet away from the property line.
So, they're just, he, he's just not gonna come further out his driveway to make that carport that's existing there deeper?
No, that's the carport.
He's got the building before he got... So, he's coming to us after the fact?
Yeah. And here's, here's the back property pin. And where are all the buildings that are related? The front property pin is right in this area right here.
So, just, just based on that, that driveway, there would have needed to be a variance at one time to approve that, that driveway. I presumably, I couldn't find anything on any of these structures down here with a variance, to be perfectly honest. I went back through minutes and, cause this garage would have needed a variance as well. And for that matter, this house would have as well unless on first reading, since this is a commercial zoning, there is no side yard required for commercial buildings, but these are not commercial buildings similar to...
So, is he the original tenant?
No, he, he is the owner now, but he is, he'd only moved here a few years.
So, what prompted his, uh, coming in, in this particular situation, what led to it?
When I went out there, found the pins?
You said, oh, by, oh, by the way.
Oh, by the way, yeah, okay.
Did I ask you to fight?
Yeah.
Only thing I see an issue with, and I actually built mine, I looked at it before I came here. That's a long, big roof. That's gonna be a whole lot of water going towards Ops basement. He might have flooding issues because of that roof.
Yeah.
As of right now, they don't have any sort of gutter system on it. I don't know if they have plans for that. There was nothing in the application that, and if you want, we can make that requirement.
Stipulate that?
Yep. I'm okay with it as long as Ops are okay with it, as long as we force them to put some sort of gutter system on it.
Right, right.
Wrong. Really?
Oh, that's, that's...
You know, that ain't that far away from there and they do have a basement and right there is a window right in there too. I, if I was him, I'd maybe not be happy about that. Especially it's an older home. Basements tend to leak to begin with.
So, they're on the carports. I think that that needed, I guess, a building permit.
It does, if it's covering an area of more than forty miles per square feet.
Okay. And then on the zoning, that area, it's not the next?
It's a commercial one. It's a commercial one zoning, but under commercial one zoning, a residential use requires the R three setbacks, which is ten feet. And basically, everything down there is about five feet.
So, do you have them run the gutter system off to the south?
From what I saw, it actually looked like...
Towards the street?
Yeah, that's what you have the most benefit from, I believe. Otherwise, you know, you, it's not gonna really run anywhere. That, that's what looked best to me when I drove by. I looked at the pictures the other night, I'm like, it didn't really make sense to me till I drove there and looked at it.
Well, later the fact it's already built and they're, now, now seeking approval, I don't think adding that stipulation in there is, is asking too much. So, I would, I would make a motion to approve with the stipulation that they provide a gutter system that feeds off to the south.
Motion by pillar.
Sorry.
Second by Wade, your discussion. Basically, I know that we've had other people, you know, there are people, I guess, a builder project and then after the fact, you know, you know. I think the last one, I think there was a fine, I think. One of those people.
I think they doubled, they doubled the permit basically as a fine.
I, I'd be happy to amend my motion. I, I put some guidance on what we did historically on that. I don't know what's appropriate.
How much was it presented?
Double the permit, right?
Twenty-eight dollars and all.
What the fuck am I doing?
It's, it's not the dollars, it's the...
We really put the hammer down, so.
I guess I don't like it there one bit.
I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not gonna hide it for twenty-eight dollars. That's, sorry, silly.
I don't like the looks of it myself, but, um, but that's my opinion, you know?
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Hiller.
Aye.
Weider.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Owen R.
Aye. Motion carried. Reports, water sewer.
Last Thursday, we had Key in the, in the city, as Jared mentioned, uh, they did the manhole lining and we were able to watch that, uh, between Moore and Key. They, they brought some cookies and ham and stuff like that and did a little dog and coin show as they did the work and, and it was really, it was really quite interesting. Uh, they, they did, uh, some, some walls and benches, they called was the terminology that they use down there that helps direct the flow in these, these manholes a whole lot better than what we had before. In particular, I'll be interested to see how the performance, uh, takes place over by Senex that, from the car wash. They went ahead and created a trench and, and came down with angles on that. So, I'll, I'll be interested to see because we've had a quite bit of sediment from the car wash that will come out there. So, all in all, I know the engineering group said that they were going to inspect them and I think what they're gonna find is that the job was well done. Dakota Pump and Controls, did they make it? Oh, they haven't been here yet. I think they have had a little staff problem. We had talked about that last week as well and, uh, COVID in part has been impacting some of these different organizations. And then Pace is still scheduled to come on out here and take a look, um, camera, camera viewing some of our lines out there. One thing in particular that, that Dave mentioned is over there, uh, at the Senex manhole there, to get to that manhole to the next manhole, when we need to shoot those lines with water to get sediment out there, we may need some additional equipment, so, um, I don't know what that's gonna, what that would cost, but we need to look into that because...
We can look, look at Pace's price sheet or whatever, cause they've generated that, I think, in years past. We don't have enough line on our machine to make that run between the manholes.
I, I kinda feel like, you know, what, what had been happening in that manhole of the car wash, you would get kind of a swirl effect in that manhole and then, and then the sediment would settle out right there and that would raise the base up and that provided enough back pressure to, um, cause issue in a residential home there. Now with that trench there, what I foresee happening is that you're still gonna have those suspended solids, the sand and stuff that's gonna go and it's gonna go down that line. My concern might be is that you're gonna get that settling out between manholes. So, we'll want to just be watching that. And that's all I have of it.
Street Cemetery.
Have you food this time?
Dave? When do you lose your, you, you lost one summer help, the other one?
They're both gone. Right, you lose the last one.
So, we're down with summer help and a, and a part-time position.
I have, I have a question, I guess, and, and maybe it falls under this year. Uh, the sidewalks on Main Street, uh, it looks to me like there's, there's quite a bit of weeds coming up in all the cracks and stuff on that. Is that the responsibility of each of the business owners along that line? Is, is that something that we communicate?
Antoinette has sent out letters and asked them to
I, I just...
Clean it up. It looks bad.
Yeah.
I happen to be, touch on that, I happened to be in City Hall one day when we discussed it.
Okay.
I asked Monty, that's all the businesses.
Very good.
Can I add something to that, Jerry?
Absolutely.
Here was a, um, eighty-seven-year-old woman that came out of these the other day and tripped on some of them. That's how high it is and she went down on both knees. You know, so maybe it's something you guys really, really need to get after, that they need to do something.
Okay.
What can we do? What can we do, Pat? Can we force them to pull weeds in front of their businesses? Can we find them? Can we? I suppose we could, I mean...
I suppose we could have days, guys, go do it and bill them, bill them back for an hourly rate. So, Antoinette, again, that she was just gonna communicate with...
She did already.
Oh, she did.
She sent letters.
How long ago was that here?
What's that?
How long ago was that?
Couple of weeks.
Weeks, it's just a couple of weeks.
Oh, a couple of days ago.
Last week, yeah.
And she wanted to clean up for Chalk Fest and Harvest Fest.
Is there anything or notices that draws teeth to that situation or not really? How finding businesses?
Basically a nuisance, so I don't know.
Well, I see, I see we have conversations and...
You like... Great.
Yeah, if you don't, a lot of those businesses don't clean snow and they can slip and fall and trip and it's too bad. And, and hopefully that person went into bees and said, clean up here's drugs, sidewalk thing.
They were happy to just take it home.
Yeah, a lot of them. Sometimes people need to verbalize that too, make it known. That seems, and it looks terrible. Finance blessing.
Police, thanks.
Thank you. Please fire four three.
But the only thing I have is not too long ago, we did have an hydrant deep down here at the old plant. It seems to be that that is getting blown out of proportion. May have taken the fire department ten minutes to get down there, which I was one of them. The time we got there, we were standing twenty feet away from it and you couldn't smell it at all.
To blow into the south?
It was blowing to the north, actually. The wind was out of the south with like maybe two miles an hour. So, we parked on the upwind side like we always do. Jesse was the officer on at that time and he did say it wasn't happening, he got down there. But he didn't immediately go try to evacuate people because it went away fairly quickly. Um, he was sitting right at the train track some week out there. No issue, standing outside is causing stop from traffic. I know there's a few citizens down there awful concerned about it, but I think it's just getting blown out of proportion. It was a quick, like release of pressure and that was about it. Part of the problem was it was only a two mile an hour wind, so it lingered a little longer than normal. If it would have been a five or ten mile an hour wind, they probably wouldn't even smell it at all.
Just wanted to mention that, uh, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. No H C D. I don't have that thing either. All right, down to eleven A, tree removal estimate. So, T and M did not provide, committed for us.
Nothing as yet.
So, um, we can either go with the turnus bid to remove that, uh, tree and stump? No, no stump.
No stump.
No.
I'll make a motion to go with the bid from the turnus to remove said tree.
Motion by Weider.
With the payment being like four thousand dollars, yes. Well, but he was, he was opting to receive the...
Materials.
Sorry, over four thousand? Is it?
Yep. We will, we have to, okay.
Motion by Weider, second. Motion by Weider, second by Miller, discussion. Roll call.
Weider, aye. Miller, aye. Hack, aye. Stern.
Aye.
O'Neal.
Aye, motion carried. Takes us down to thirteen, public comment, George?
He's here from my other meeting.
Oh, okay.
I think the news had just come down here and said.
All right, well, glad to, glad to have you. Especially if you got nothing to say, that's.
Yeah, we would, that wouldn't be that bad anyway.
All right, good, good. All right, approve of the bills. Take that.
Take that.
Approve of the bills, motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. I just got a question about this black water and this bill. What was that?
That was for when they were getting ready to do that work on the restation, they pumped it down.
Some more discussion.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Stern, aye. Hack, aye. Miller, aye. Weider, aye. O'Neal.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. We have tornado warning, it sounds like fifteen minutes.
It's pretty sunny down there.
Yeah, what?